One thing to go over, today is a special meeting, oh, no, excuse me, not a special meeting. I'm gonna start off with the public charge, thank you so much, had the wrong document in front of me. This is budget work session, day four, and we will start off with the public charge. The Board of County Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful and courteous manner, both with the board and fellow citizens and residents. At any time, should any member of the board or any citizen fail to observe the public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until the individual gains personal control. Should the corn fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until such a time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. We will also be doing a land acknowledgement. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners Meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Katava, Ibo, Okanichi, Shakari, and Tuscarawo peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the disopposition of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength in spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of those nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing injustice for all that inhabit the land. Let us walk forward toward, let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing the future guided by compassion, respect, and unity. If there is nothing from the county manager, we will go ahead and proceed. I also want to publicly thank my colleagues for their support on yesterday, and also thank Commissioner Carter for stepping in in my absence. We will begin the first presentation with the Community Intervention and Support Services. I'm looking at the clerk and the presentation is already prepped and ready. My microphone now works, I can vacate this seat and go back to my own, and you all can proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Crystal Harris, I'm the Director for Community Intervention and Support Services. And today I'll just be kind of providing an update to you all. We have not presented to the board since early last year, I believe. So today I'm just gonna kind of give you an idea of where we are right now. There have been some changes since we presented last year, provide some programmatic updates, and then kind of give you a look ahead, what CISS looks like moving forward. This is our current organization chart. Since the last time we presented, I did add, we do have a new position that was added to our department, which is our Community Support Manager. Mr. Brooks is responsible for seeking employment and education opportunities for all of our participants in our programs. He also will be leading our Gang Reduction Strategy Steering Committee, which was transitioned from JSD to CISS last year as well. There was a change with Project Build, we eliminated the supervisor position and created another outreach worker. So now Project Build is actually fully staffed for the first time in a long time. As well as with Bull City United, we made an adjustment where there used to be two managers, but we reclassed one of the manager positions to a supervisor, and we split it up where our manager now manages the Violence Interrupters as well as the supervisor, and then we have a supervisor specifically for the outreach workers. Our data analyst position is still vacant, but I have applications that I'm reviewing and hope to bring someone on before the end of this month. So we'll start with our first program, which is Bull City United. Of course, it initially was created in 2016, if I'm not mistaken, and it started with two census tracts, which was our Fayetteville Street area and McDougal Terrace, and it was based on the data from Durham Police Department. In 2021, the city decided to increase their investment and expanded, and it added four additional census tracts to include Main Street area, Cornwallis, Oxford Manor, and South Side. That expansion also included some positions, a total of 18, including a supervisor, five outreach workers, and 12 Violence Interrupters, which brings that program to having a total of 25 staff. The Bull City United program follows the Cure Violence Model. They have three basic parts of that model, which is to detect and interrupt, and that's basically to try to prevent retaliations of any shootings that happen. Identify and treat, that's where we provide outreach and case management to the highest-risk individuals, and then mobilize, and that's to mobilize the community, change their norms. So we do have a shooting response for any shootings that happen within our target areas. This map just shows what the total census tracts, what they look like. Most of them are in the kind of downtown area of Durham, but we have one that's in the northern part, which is the Oxford Manor location. So far, these are numbers for quarters one through three of fiscal year 2324 of persons shot. I do want to include that these are persons shot in the target area, not in the census tract. So you could kind of see that persons shot in our census tract 1304 has increased tremendously from before. They are averaging about four, four to eight shootings throughout this fiscal year. And that area is our Cornwallis area. We also have our blue, which is our Main Street area, that has also increased as the quarters have gone on. Quarter two was the most for both the Cornwallis area as well as the Fayetteville Street location as well. The homicides that we've had, most of the target areas have not had homicides, but 1400, which is our, which is the McDougal Terrace area, has had to in quarter two. We know that that number has for the next quarter that we have quarter four that will be increased as well. But for most of the, most of the census tracts, target areas did not have any homicides as far as this fiscal year so far. So mediations are a part of the Cure Violence Model. Mediations are basically our Violence Interrupters doing street outreach, working with highest-risk individuals, trying to mitigate any type of conflict that may be brewing that we know of, to try to keep from having shootings. And so for, so far this year for the fiscal year, we've had 698 mediations. Some of the program highlights, last year in July, we hosted the Safe Summer Community Resource Fair. We had plenty, several of our community partners come out from Durham Parks and Rec. We had some folks from Public Health, DSS come out to provide resources to each of our target areas, so we have one in each area, each event in each area. We participated with Cornwallis Community to give out essential supplies, as well as the Oxford Manor trunk or treat. We've hosted two participant events, as well as our annual Thanksgiving event in November, and our Week of Peace in January. Last Sunday, last Saturday, this past Saturday, started our Safe Summer for this year, and so it's happening this, last Saturday, in the 15th, the 22nd, and the 29th will be our dates for this, this summer. Project Build is our Durham County Gang Intervention Program. This model we use is the comprehensive gang model. It provides services for individuals ages 14 to 21 who are at high risk of gang involvement. We utilize street outreach workers as well, they provide 101 case management. We also provide skill-building opportunities to get youth, to connect youth to school and employment opportunities. We have an intervention team where we meet at least, I think it's every other week, at least twice a month, we meet, and it's kind of, basically, we have a table of individuals that engage with the youth that are on our caseloads. So we have representatives from the HART program, from the school system, from Juvenile Justice, from DSS, from Durham Police, as well as the Sheriff's Office, and we basically go through participants. We may have a list of maybe seven or eight every meeting, and we just kind of talk about where they are, what additional resources are needed for this individual, how we can make sure that they're getting what they need. And that is the biggest part, part of our comprehensive gang model. Project Build highlights, as I stated, we are fully staffed at the moment. We have a program manager, a lead worker, and then six outreach workers, to include one bilingual. We actually have two, even though one is actually a bilingual position, our JCPC-funded position is also a bilingual individual. We hosted our Comprehensive Gang Model Training about three weeks ago. Because we have so many new staff, as well as myself, since the training was held in 2020, I decided to bring that training back to our, to our staff, and we included our community partners who are on our intervention team meeting. So we also had Bull City United, our community manager, Community Support Manager, and our My Brothers Keeper present. So total, we had about 65 participants in this training. We felt it necessary to include everyone that's going to be working with us with this program, so everyone knows what their role is as being a part of the intervention team meeting. A part of that training was also about our Gang Reduction Strategy, which is kind of also how Project Build was brought out of the Gang Reduction Strategy with the county and the city. So that training was also held incorporated within this, it was a three-day training for everyone. This year, we had the opportunity to incorporate some new programming. In years past, a lot of our program was very recreational-focused, and so we, we decided that we needed to do more skill-building and pro-social skills for our youth, because the youth have changed since the program started, so we wanted to kind of enhance it and do a Project Build 2.0. So we've had a lot of new partners, including Stand Up Speak Out, which is one of our programs that the, the youth really enjoyed. And so we have been able to expand that, we started out, I believe, with a six-week program with them, and we were able to extend it to two additional six weeks with the youth, because they really enjoy that programming. We recently received information that we would be receiving some reallocated funding of $11,000 from JCPC for next fiscal year. So we will be using those funds to even, expand even more on some of those opportunities for skill-building that will lead to employment opportunities for some of our youth. And next, next week, we're actually gonna be hosting our first graduation celebration for seven of our participants. We have five that are graduating from high school, and two that are graduating from middle school to high school. So we're gonna do kind of a small celebration for them and their parents to come, to give them certificates and just celebrate their achievements, and then we're gonna do an outing for the kids as well. And then we're gonna do an end-of-year for Project Build, some of Project Build youth, as well as some of the MBK students that attended our summit, to take them out to a Durham Bulls game as well, just to end the year on a high note. So speaking of MBK, of course, this is a, it's not a program, it's an initiative, that was President, former President Obama's call to action to ensure our nation's boys and young men of color have equal opportunity to achieve their full potential. Last year, we hired a new MBK program manager, and so we were able to start doing the work again, rebuilding that initiative within Durham. The, this is the framework, the elements of success, I think everyone might be familiar, but it basically talks about how we're collaborating, we're doing collective impact, identify how we can make system change using data to drive those decisions, and then how can we ensure sustainability for those that are working with MBK Durham. Some of the program highlights, we have started our Steering Committee. It has been developed, and we're meeting monthly. Earlier today, we actually had a strategic planning development session. We had, had a vendor come in to help us do that work. That person will help us develop our goals and our objectives with our community partners, who will be a part of the Steering Committee. In November of last year, we did become a certified community with the MBK Alliance. We are one of two in North Carolina and one of 27 in the United States. And so last week, we hosted our, our first MBK Summit, and I'll talk about that in the next slide a little bit more. And then as well, our MBK manager started a series of a podcast-style listening session with our DPS students of young men of color. And basically, he's gone to three schools so far, and he's just having conversations about community safety, what are some things within school, their goals, what are they wanting to see differently in their community? And so with our summit last week, we had more than 80 students and community partners in attendance. It was about 50 young men and boys of color in attendance, which is more than we could have even imagined for our first event. Some of the panelists did include our mayor, Mayor Williams, Sheriff Burkhead. We also had the CEO of MBK Durham who came. He's also a part of one of the certified communities. And then we had the Executive Director from Cities United, who came from Louisville, Kentucky. We also had other panelists from educate, from the educational sector. We have professors from Fayetteville State. We had representatives from Coastal Credit Union, just talking about kind of fiscal, financial responsibility, and some of the other panel topics was just about gun violence, and we actually had some youth who participated on that panel as well. Some of our students, attendees, came from Carrington Middle, Durham Nativity School. They actually had three tables full of youth. Youth Build, who was one of our JCPC partners, they, they brought some youth as well, and then of course, youth from our CISS programs came as well. And I just wanted to share, this is a flyer that we have for our Talk Your Podcast, Talk Your Talk Podcast, that our program manager is doing across Durham and within DPS. And again, it's just talking to young men and giving them a space to kind of talk about what their needs are, what their community looks like to them. So some CISS department highlights, as I stated earlier, the Gang Reduction Strategy Steering Committee was transitioned to the department late last year. And so our plan is to work on that Steering Committee. Now that we have the training completed, we will work on gathering the Steering Committee this month and some of July, we know July is hard to kind of gather people together because it's the summer, but we are hoping to launch the actual Steering Committee in August. That will be our first meeting of the collective and start working on reviewing the recommendations from the last assessment, and then determining if there's a need for a new assessment, because I know it's been a few years since that assessment had been completed. And so just trying to see if any of the recommendations have already begun the work, and if not, what do we need to do to kind of start that work and what that looks like. The department has hosted two racial equity trainings. One was our Racial Equity Groundwater, which was in December, and then we had the Phase One Workshop in April. That, both of those included community partners. We had some staff within the enterprise, as well as our staff. So we kind of had a collective of people just in the community, it wasn't just for our department. So we opened it up so that everyone that we work with can be on the same page of how equity plays a role in the work that we're doing within this department. We also hosted our Community Safety Conference in August. It was very well-attended. We, I believe, we kind of were planning for about 150, and we ended up having over 200 attendees for this first event. So we're hoping that we will be able to host this conference again. We did use the Burn, Edward Burns Grant that we had, that we received from Congressman David Price's office, and this was just part of what we were doing. It was a three-part program pilot that we did. And so we also worked with North Carolina Central University Juvenile Justice Institute, as well as one of the professors from St. Aug University, who also did a literature review, kind of looked at all of our programs. They also did listening sessions with some youth. We did three, we did one with youth, we did one with college-age students, and then we did one with community partners. And so all of that kind of helps us kind of guide how we're doing, what we're doing, and help us kind of develop that, that Community Safety Conference as well. We completed program and departmental evaluations. So I did work with a third-party vendor to come in to evaluate all three programs, to kind of look at how we're doing programmatically. It wasn't specifically a quantitative, a qualitative evaluation, but it did give us feedback on, from the employee's perspective, because there were focus groups with the staff as well. And then also just kind of looking at the programs, their numbers, making sure that our programs are successful, if there's room for improvement and what we need to work on. And currently, I'm working with the same third-party who's actually looking at our department structure to ensure that we're working in the most effective and efficient way, based on how we're structured. Are there any places that we can do something differently? And looking at the goals and objectives and the vision of how I would like to see our department moving forward. And then lastly, I was appointed by Governor Cooper to the North Carolina Office of Violence Prevention Advisory Board. Actually have a meeting right now that's going on for our SO committee. But I've been on this board for about four months, right, four months now, and this is basically a collective of anybody working in North, in North Carolina on community violence and community safety. And so it's an honor to be a part of this board and kind of hearing and seeing what's happening in other counties, how other counties can benefit us, how we can benefit them, and work together to develop some statewide training, some statewide objectives and goals, so everyone is kind of working on the same thing, and maybe differently, but we'll have all a collective of what we're doing for the state of North Carolina. So a look ahead, as I mentioned, the Gang Reduction Steering Committee is scheduled to relaunch in August. One goal of MBK Durham is to create a countywide data hub. So that is why I'm trying to get the data analysts hired as quickly as possible. And part of that is really having our community partners that work with MBK Durham to be able to help them with some technical assistance on how to collect their data, how to use the data to be able to get funding, because that's one thing that we've heard from most of the partners is, we, we're doing the work, but we don't know how to tell our story, how to create that narrative to show that what we're doing is, is successful, how we're impacting others. So we believe that if we have a countywide data hub where everybody can kind of give us their numbers, then we can have someone to analyze that, that data and be able to use that for those funding opportunities. And it kind of streamlines, well, we'll be able to say, this person, say we started DSS, this was a child in foster care, these are all the resources that they were provided, and now this is how, how we got to the end, this is their success. And I think that this data hub will be able to tell that story and show the collective impact that we're looking for. As mentioned, Project Build did receive $11,000 from JCPC, so we'll be seeking new additional skill-building partnerships. And then hopefully, in fiscal year 2526, we'll be able to expand Project Build to include youth 10 to 13 years old. We do recognize that kids are younger now that are kind of being impacted and are at high risk of gang involvement. And right now, we're getting a lot of referrals for that age group, but we're sending them out to other JCPC partners that do work with that group of individuals. But we do also see how our program could impact and could provide that need for them as well. So that is our hope in not next fiscal year, but the one after, hopefully. And that's my presentation.
Thank you all so much. I'm gonna give it to the board, who has the first set of questions. Commissioner Howton, we can start with you, if you'd like to go. No problem.
Now, let me formulate my question, give me a minute.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Crystal. Really appreciate getting this update and really getting insight into a lot of the structural systemic work that you have been doing and bringing in outside expertise and everything, so thank you so much. I know this, it's a lot, the, you know, the different programs that you're working with, it's, it's very challenging. So I, you've made a lot of progress. So I have a, a number of follow-up questions. One, with Project Build, I'm so excited about the expansion. It is so necessary and needed. That can't happen too soon. And so obviously, that's gonna take additional resources, you know, in staffing. But I believe so strongly in the Project Build model. And I would love to get data for this past year about the number of youth that have been served and the outcomes related to that, because it is a case management, wraparound preventative care, you know, the, just what you described. And also the staff, we have some very long-term staff there, people who have been so committed to this program. I know Perry's not sitting here, but I know we need to get them into the kind of, you know, space that they, they deserve for their program. But I will, I will be really interested to know whether we do even now have adequate resources, especially when I think about just the little things that you just said, like having a high school or middle school graduation is so important. And I'm thinking about the summer, you know, making sure that all of those kids are involved in something in the summer. You know, ju- ju- just that type of thing. So that, that's one of my questions is, do we have adequate resources even right now for that program?
I would say we do not. For our budget for Project Build, we receive $130,000 from JCPC, and that is one full-time position, as well as a third position, and then the other goes to our programming for individuals 14 to 17 years old. So the 18 to 21, we can't use those JCP dollars for that. So outside of JCPC, Project Build has $19,000 that comes from the city, and then about $30,000 that comes from the county. And so we do what we can with that limited amount. And our plans for the summer, we used to have a summer camp during the summer, but our numbers for the last two summers have not been the greatest. So what we've decided is to try to link them to other opportunities that are already out in the community, and then we would still have kind of drop-in events for them. It may not be the three weeks that we usually do, but we're gonna have some different opportunities for them during the summer that still connects them with Project Build. But we've been working to kind of get them situated with other programs.
I see Joanne is like, ready to go.
Good afternoon, Joanne Pierce, Assistant County Manager. Just wanted to add to what Director Harris stated and also address your question perhaps further, Commissioner Jacobs. To that point, no, we don't have enough. However, this year was an important year of evaluation and examination, and if, I believe if Director Harris is able to do some restructuring and looking at across her programs, she may be able to find within her existing budget, those opportunities that we most, we desperately need to support those most impacted by these issues that we're facing.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna ask about. So I look forward to you coming back with recommendations about reallocating, because, you know, when we talk about the gun violence that we're seeing on the street, I mean, this is a program that we know that works. This is, you know, we want kids to prevent, this is our effective gang prevention program. So I, I want to make sure that we are fully supporting this program. And related to this, I just, when I was listening to you, I was thinking about, you know, are we connecting, because this is also a, we are directly supporting Durham Public Schools. These are kids that often are being referred from schools, and I'm wondering, are, are, do we have any connection right now with the Durham Public Schools Foundation?
So we have, DPS is one of our strongest collaborators that we have. They actually brought about six or seven folks from their Student Services office to our Comprehensive Gang Model Training. And so we're working closely with them, we do have relationship with, we have an MOA with the superintendent for, with the school system to be able to go into the schools and do different things with those youth. We're actually looking at some additional services that we could provide within the school system for next school year. So we're really working closely with them, because they really do have the most contact with the students.
Right. And I just also want to mention with the gang report, I really hope that we will move forward with implementing it. If there is a need to revise, that, let's not, we can spend forever revising plans, but from my memory of that report, it was very focused on upstream investments and specifically around our schools. And using the data that we're getting through the classroom and through the schools, identifying kids early on who are having behavioral issues, you know, when there's truancy, some of the data points that we can already track now when kids are at risk. And I, and I just want to make sure that you all, that you connect with Maggie, Clapp, the Director of DSS, because she has already been talking to our board about starting a program that she led in Florida, where she worked with the school system in Florida. And they, the social workers, DSS social workers, work closely with the school system staff, again, identifying kids who are at risk and how to provide wraparound support with the families. So this will be really something great that I think aligns with the gang prevention, with the gang, gang reduction plan, and also with what you're doing with Project Build, MBK. So I just want to make sure you connect with, with her on that. Yeah. And anyway, I'll stop there.
We can come back to you.
Yeah.
Because I know you're going. One, before I start, I do want to say, I thank my colleagues for their support yesterday, but I also want to thank the staff, the manager, the clerks, and all the assistant county. A lot of y'all checked on me, I know y'all had family members who are also ill, so please know that I appreciate you all as my extended family, so I did want to correct that. And speaking of which, you know, I left here yesterday, and the surgery actually is happening now, for those of you who have asked. But I had to leave, you know, we got a policy in my family. We don't like to- We don't like to eat if the surgeon has told another one of our family members they can't eat, right? Like, we all going to suffer together. If you can't eat, then nobody eats. Well, you know, the hospital was hospitaling and doing what they do best, and let stuff fall through the cracks. And so it had been quite some time. So when I left here, checked on mom, went to go get us some lunch, and when I came back, I could not get into the hospital because some kid had been shot. So we were on lockdown. One of the security guards, one of the security guards knew me, I said, there's no shank in here, you know? And he let me, you know, get my food to my mom. But I laid in the car, in the parking lot, for two hours until the lockdown was over. I stated to say that we have to be really cognizant of the fact that gun violence affects so much more. Like, I honestly sincerely think, you know, and it's not about me, let me make that very clear. I was out there with a lot of other families, including the families of the folks who got shot. So I'm always up here pontificating, upset, crying because some child has died. But I do recognize that there are just so many other multiplying effects that this thing has. This man had driven from Virginia, his daughter been in a car accident, like, he was losing his mind because he could not get into the emergency room. And it had to do with the fact that somebody was shot. So I do feel very confident that there are some things that we can do. And I know I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I don't care. I'm going to keep hitting Javier Caviar over the head with her comments about how much she don't care about gun violence. I don't care, because we don't need elected officials who say they don't care about gun violence. We just don't. And I'm happy to say that we sit up here, we got some folks that do care about gun violence, and that's why we've been supportive. But we need you all to make sure that these programs are running well. And I don't have to beat a dead horse. Y'all know all the programs ain't running well. This is a budget hearing, we ain't talking about the budget, we got an overview. I got a problem with that, but at this point, I just want to move forward, because it's too many dead kids, and I hope that somewhere in your mind, you just want to get better. If not for me, if not, because I feel like yelling at people don't do no good. Clearly, the school board going to keep treating black kids like crap. I need y'all not to, I need y'all to do y'all part, because I can't count on them to do their part, right? And so I'm not going to sit here and kind of sort of beat a dead horse. And I'm troubled, because I feel like in the next fiscal year budget, if I don't punch like a hammer, I can get, I know who's going to be sitting up here in these seats. They replacing the library with the, the library with the librarian. The librarian got to go look for answers, I got them. And I recognize who going to sit here next year. And she not going to push y'all as hard as I'm pushing y'all. I'm unapologetic about that. So we know where Bull City United is, we know the steps that we got to take. I will say, I agree with my colleague, and I probably agree with some of the other things that my other colleagues say. I do feel like Project Build is the one that we really got to put an emphasis on. Do I want to take some of this funding and send it over to, not all of it, good gracious, do I want to support some external partners? Do I like some of the work that's being done by the Hey Ty Reborn Justice Movement? Absolutely. But I do want to make sure that we invest in. I would be behind us restructuring to put more money into Project Build. And can I, so the fit program, I'll ask that later, let's stick to these. My issue with my brother's keeper, I've seen some things morph. I, I want to just say this publicly, you all do a lot of work, some of it is gang interruption that we can't know about. But I can't say, I'm just going to say it frankly, like, we don't, short of this presentation, we don't always know what you all do. Like, the MBK summit, I'm a hold my mule. If I would have known about the planning, I would have come to the manager and went and got y'all sponsors. There was nothing wrong with having it at Larnes Park. I would have got, I would have gone out, yes, we happy, we have 50 kids. I personally feel like y'all could have had 500. Now, that's my personal belief. And I feel like if you would have leaned on the women sitting up here, as opposed to doing it yourselves, I feel like it would have been bigger. That doesn't mean that you all didn't put on a decent program. I was there for a short amount of time. I think there was some valuable conversations that could have been had, but I know that my colleagues, as well as some people in leadership, didn't know nothing about it. That's a problem, especially since we've been very vocal about how much we care about it. I'm happy that the clerk was able to put it on my agenda. I found out about it on LinkedIn when Cory Robinson shared it. That is how, that's the truth. That is how I found out about it. Now, if you say you sent me an email and I didn't see it, you can say that, it didn't get on my calendar until Monica put it on there. And then I called my colleagues and I said, did y'all know about this? And I called some people in management, and they ain't know about it. So that's just the truth. Nobody, I'll be the one to tell it, and I'll show you the emails that they sent me back if you want to look at it. But it's the truth. Cory now has a podcast. I could be wrong, but I ain't seen no dates on that podcast. I might want to tune in to hear what the kids talking about. So I'm just, I'm just saying, like, there's no need to do this stuff behind closed doors when you have folks up here who really seriously care about these kids dying, who really seriously, quite frankly, want to hear what they're saying so that it can inform our decision-making, so that it can inform our policy praxis. That's all we asking for. This week, Javonah Lewis did a sit-down with black fathers. It said, men only. I didn't go, because it said, men only. But they're, so that they can have their space, and these fathers could talk about what they want to talk about. That was not what the MBK space was. And so I, I understand that men need to have their own spaces. Lord knows, women need to have their own at times. But I think we need to do a better job of letting folks know what's going on. Some of the recommendations, I am a little bit worried about the data analysts, because I feel like my first year, you know, we really fought for that position when Joanne was doing this by herself, you know, there were people saying, oh, there's nobody over these programs. And I was like, we do have somebody. Where I'm struggling is where we haven't filled them. So I don't, I don't know if we need to add more money to the position, I don't know if we need to do an additional search. Did we already have somebody and we lost that person? So that's just a, so when we're asking for data, you know, I had the same question that she had. You know, I want to know, and quite frankly, I want to know before the 10th, and I, which is Monday, I want to know how many kids we served. And I'd love if somebody could do an algorithm and maybe almost project, you know, how many more could we've served if it was 10 or 13 kids? And I'm going to do a juxtaposition, I'm going to do the Betsy program. The Betsy program, agriculture program that's at some schools, you probably thinking, what in the world does that have to do with anything? And I imagine the Betsy people are going to be super excited. Like, they will legitimately come in here and say, this is how many more agriculture students we can help. Well, we only have an ag teacher there, right? Like, they come in here with data points, and that is what convinces my colleagues, and at times convinces me, when I have to wait a minute, step back, wait a minute, can we really put money here? Do we really have an agriculture teacher here? Do we really have kids that are convinced about ag? Do we have farmland for them to work on? What's going to be the program? But, and they'll have all the answers. And I just feel like with this program, to be quite frank, I stepped back because I felt very comfortable with the work that was being done. I'm not as comfortable, and that didn't have a lot, some of it has to do with some of y'all, I ain't going to lie. But it also has to do with the fact that, and I'm going to end here and give it to my colleagues, it has a lot to do with the fact that we are going into a very hot summer. I said this the other day at the meeting. It is one thing when we can go to individuals and say, we will offer you this job opportunity. Okay, your issue is housing. The fact that we had a shootout in front of the ALFOF at nine o'clock in the morning, y'all, that is a housing issue. And the people say it's not. You, you, you want to be in your bed at seven, ain't nobody waking up wanting to shoot somebody. Like, yes, there are some situations where it gets that bad. But where we're at now, those 12 people that were shot, I know that there was one that was a domestic violence issue. One was a young man who was breaking into his own aunt's house and his uncle shot him. So that was a problem, and that was in the morning, so we know he wasn't in school. But the other ones were gang violence. I'm going to use myself as an example. If someone were to murder me, I have many siblings, there is no job, there is no house, there's no wraparound services that you can give them where they will not want their pound of flesh. And so for me, the reason why I want this to work like a well-oiled machine is because extra, we, we still have, that is going to play itself out, and I'm heartbroken, and I'll be crying again, because I feel like it'll be seven more people dead. Because this gang war that's going on is really about 20 people. It's not everybody. But I need y'all working well on everybody, because this is going to play itself out. And seeing as how, and I'm, I'm with my colleague over here, when she asked a second ago, she's like, what summer opportunities do we have? Last night, and I'm going to say it again, Javier got up there and talked so much about the school board budget, just showed me where the city council has put in a dime. Last three weeks, we've had parents that go up there saying, oh, there was this camp on Cornwallis, we need $20,000, is this in the budget again? They said, no. The camps at Parks and Rec have been closed since February, and they lack transportation. So that little performative, ally shit that they doing over there, where we care about black kids, and they'll talk about them on TV, where they say that we, we want to have more camps, but don't want to put no more money in them. They want to show, support a DPS budget, but they've never put in a dime. We want to make sure kids are safe, but you pulled your SROs out. Like, that is going to continue to happen, and y'all are going to get browbeat, because they, they just like to talk on TV, and they don't really care about dead black children. I'm asking y'all to care in the absence of me and other people. That's all I'm asking for. And if you come to us with these requests, you already see, one, two, you don't need but three, you going to get five. But when y'all sit up here and don't want to tell us the truth about some stuff that's done happen because somebody done got in trouble, people at WR, WR have been arrested for drunk driving, we got folks at the hospitals, I get it, folks have been arrested, like, let's be honest about it. That doesn't mean the whole program is bad, but y'all walking around here in shame ain't helping nobody. So I would like to see some of those data points. The recommendations, I look forward to seeing what those are. I want to know about an update on the Black Boys Roundtable. I need to talk with HR, the manager, about filling that data analyst position. And I look forward to finding out more about this graduation, because once again, you all said there's one, we know nothing about it. And I'm going to get it to my colleagues, but thank y'all for everything that y'all do. Who wants to go next?
Thank you.
Oh, if you, oh, I'm sorry, you might have a response.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burns. Just two things, we did not include the budget because we were not asking for additional funds. However, we will provide you with the information, I believe you requested last week, we have it for you. We'll send it today. And then the, the other great point you made about just the aspect of the evaluation this year, one of the things that the evaluator, the researcher was able to look at is even program design, and whether the programs or approaches that we're using, is it a good fit? And we've had other things, for instance, the Community Safety Conference, where we've heard loudly and clearly through the research and evaluation, and also through the conference and the surveys and feedback, that for Durham County, an approach, a collaborative approach that includes community, law enforcement, the transparency that we all want and need, and then those who are most closely impacted by gun violence, community violence, they all have to be at the table in a collaborative way. And so that also allowed us a chance to look at models and approaches. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I just wanted to add that we will be sending information about the graduation. We just made that decision about last week while I was on vacation, because I had to find funding, because this is something I wanted to do, because Project Build has exhausted all of their funding for this year. And with the summit, I do apologize, we did send the information out, but we will make sure that you all are included in all of these things that we are doing and what's happening. But we did also secure funding, the ILA that we have with the city, we made that ask. And so that's how we were able to fund the summit this year. It was just late getting the funding. But we were able to do that, and so therefore, that's what paid for the summit that we had last week. But with the data analysts, I am working-
We looking at each other, because why y'all getting the city to pay for something that we pay? Like, that's the, yeah, like, me and Wendy over here, and I-
Yeah.
You went to the city to ask them to pay for-
Well, no, that was already an ILA currently, it was a current ILA. It's not new money, it was already money that we already had.
I get that, but still.
But-
No, they-
No, this is, this is an interlocal group, that's a four-year, one of the-
But can I say, we hear you. We got the point.
Thank you. I'm going to let it go, because it's over. I walked in, the children were happy, that's all I care about. The children were fed, they were happy, and I saw a lot of men that cared about this issue, so I want to continue to reengage in. I don't have a problem with the program, just the process, but we, because it's not about us, it's about kids.
Right, it is. And so that's what we're really trying to work hard on. But having that data analyst, I am trying to, really been working to fill that position. But I had three new positions, not including a data analyst, and trying to stand up two programs at the same time. So being the only administrator, it was difficult to do all of that within this last fiscal year. But that is one of my priorities to get done, because we see that data is what we need that's driving this whole department, is what our data looks like. So I do have the applications, just have to go through and interview, and that will happen this week or next week.
Well, thank you so much. One, congratulations also on your gubernatorial appointment. So thank you so much for that. Y'all know what money y'all want to move, I don't have to say it, y'all know where we want it to go, and I'm going to my colleagues now. I, I don't know which one wants to go first. Commissioner Carter, thank you, lady.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I think that you've done a remarkable job of leading the new department and providing some good structure for it, and presenting that to us today helped me understand the department better. Grateful, really grateful for that. I was going to congratulate you for on your appointment by the governor to the Violence Prevention and Advisory Board. That's awesome. And I, I think it's, I think you're doing a lot of really good things. I wanted to mention the comprehensive gang model training that you had for yourselves and partners. You know, I, if we, if I felt like we had more time, I'd ask for more information about the comprehensive gang model, but I do, I do believe in it. It's a very comprehensive, as it says, holistic. If it's something you could tell us really quickly, I think it's an impressive approach, and if you could just highlight a few parts of it.
Definitely. So basically, it's just as it is, it's comprehensive. So it's looking at every aspect of the youth in the community. So it's bringing everyone together to do this work. And so our part is the street outreach with Project Build, which was born out of the gang reduction strategy. You have the Gang Reduction Steering Committee, and then your intervention team, those are the three parts. And so it's just working collaboratively and finding out who is responsible for doing what. And so we actually have a follow-up meeting with them on Thursday, they're going to provide me with the presentation that they trained us on, so I'll be happy to share that with you all as well.
Cool, that'd be awesome. Yeah, and getting, and getting the Gang Reduction Steering Committee back up and running, just all that, and making it real, making it, you know, not just a meeting that happens every couple of months, but actually, you know, doing the real work. And it's hard, because it is so, so cross-sector, that's always the most difficult work. And of course, this is hard, because there are more guns in America than there are people. And so that makes all of our work doubly hard in our efforts to prevent the killing of children, usually children of color, as our vice chair always reminds us. I was wondering if you all work with Project Safe Neighborhood, Hey Ty Reborn, the Justice Services Department, those were just a few that came to mind. Then Wendy mentioned, you know, DSS, and of course, there's DPS, clearly a partner, but just wondering how your work intersects with Project Safe Neighborhood and Hey Ty Reborn in particular.
So with Project Safe Neighborhood, we actually attend there, they have quarterly meetings, which I attend, as well as some of my team attends that. We work closely with the sheriff and Tamika Gilmore, who is the coordinator.
Oh, yes.
And so we, and last year, they had an event, and we did get the email invitation for the event this year, so we do set up our tables at their events, at the stadium, provide information. And Tamika is actually on our MBK steering committee as well. And so we work very closely with the Sheriff's Department and that program. With Hey Ty Reborn, we also work very closely with them. We actually have a day once a week where we take participants over to Hey Ty, who are formerly just involved, or currently just involved, who are looking for educational employment opportunities. We've referred some over for their bridge program, so we do work closely with them as well.
Good, very good. And what happens if one is, is called an MBK certified community?
So basically, we had to go through a, it was about a six-week process, and it was actually modules that we had to do online. There's questions about our community that we had to complete, we had to develop our goals for our community and what our MBK was going to do. We actually had a convening in Chicago that we attended with the other 27. There are four communities in other states who actually came to kind of talk about what they're doing and how they've been able to use their data to show how their collective impact is working within their community. So we get more support, being a certified community, we get more training. We have a Chelle Hernandez, who is actually our liaison with MBK Alliance, she works very closely with us as well, to help us develop what it looks like for our community. So everybody's going to look differently, but it provides us with more resources and kind of a better structure to get us started, especially since we kind of started, and then we stopped for a while, and now we're getting back into the swing of things. So it makes us have more resources to be able to provide to our community partners and to our community.
Great. And it does sound very official, it gives us that designation as well. I, I really like the idea of your countywide data hub. And I'm wondering, will this be an opportunity for shared data just within CISs? Or, you know, it'll be data that will, you'll be sharing a- across partners?
Across partners, that's our goal. And part of, um, the evaluation that we have going on right now as far as the departmental structure, they actually provide us with some resources around data sharing and what that hub looks like. So, um, that's something that we're gonna be looking at and seeing how we can incorporate that into our department and into both the, uh, Gang Reduction Steering Committee and MBK. And so since we have two steering committees living in the same department, we're trying to see what's the mo- the best way to streamline because we're more than likely gonna have the same people kind of overlapping into both. Um, and MBK is kind of like the umbrella that game, the gang steering committee would somewhat fall under as well. So those two managers will work closely together. But definitely some data sharing is what we're looking for.
Because that's what everybody wants to do, is data share. And it's, it seems like it's always so, so difficult, you know? So anyway, you're making it sound like it's going to be easy, can-do attitude.
Can do, I'm gonna try my best.
We like that. Well, and, and, and also kudos on the department and program evaluation and review that is underway. And I'll look forward to, um, learning more about the results of that. But thank you so much for being here today and for all the leadership you're providing in your department. Thank you.
So... Um, first, I want to say thank you for the work that you've done to, to set the, to get this department up and rolling. Unless you have been a part of starting a whole new department, you can imagine all the stuff that it's taken to, to get this set up. So I want to say thank you for the work that you've done there. And when we talk about, um, the strategies that you're talking about with MBK, My Brother's Keeper is not something, it takes collaboration. It takes the whole community participating. You know, we are so impatient. We are so impatient with the fact that our children are dying. And we don't have a lot of patience to wait for outcomes. And, you know, I've heard people talk about, they want to see outcomes now. My God, if anybody wants to see outcomes, I want to see outcomes. And they don't happen overnight. So... I think you guys get it. I, I can't get through this one. Just, I can't, I can't. Yeah, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let it go. I can't, I can't do this one today.
Thank you, Commissioner Howerton. In the event that you do want to come back, did you have any additional questions?
Only thing I wanted to add was similar, as I know you're gonna be reeval- you, as part of your evaluation, you are evaluating all of the programs and their, um, effectiveness. Um, similar to, and I'm just gonna piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Burns said. I think with, um, MBK, the steps that you're taking about getting it certified, um, also want to make sure that has adequate funding. We want to make sure there's enough funding to host events, um, to, and be able to, that, you know, the structure of the steering committee, um, I'd be really interested to see who is serving on that. I think that's very important. Um, again, this whole collaborative model. But how do we, how do we, um, you know, do, which is also a mention before, is, um, having, supporting nonprofits in the community that are carrying out the goals of MBK? Because MBK is not a program, it's, it's an initiative, as you said. It's not a program, it's not providing services. It's an initiative, trying to lift up and support the work that is happening in the community. You know, the collect- it's like a collective impact model, right? Um, so having that capacity building, how can we strategically do that with being able to support some of the organizations that we know are, there are, um, who are, who have for a long time been doing great work and could benefit from that increased capacity? And then having a pipeline, how we connect, um, youth in our community to them. So all of that. But again, that's, so I hope you'll also come back with, in the future, recommendations about how we can restructure, um, with MBK too. Because I know that's important.
And to your point, um, My Brother's Keeper, um, went through a shift two, three years ago, moving from, you know, addressing one person, one individual, one male youth of color, to the systemic, uh, change in the blueprint that we now use, which is really great that we're part of that, uh, national certification where we're getting that support. And you're right, it's the hub, it's the collective impact, it's getting, getting those folks at the table, all systems onboard, institutions, uh, multi-sector collaborative. So yes, we have that. And I believe, uh, Director Harris, she's at decision points. We're at decision points where you will see those changes that are necessary as a result of program evaluation that we can bring forward to you that will really, um, enrich, um, the work that's being done in this department.
Okay, ladies, um, I know we asking, uh, a lot of y'all, and most people would say that that's a heavy lift. I just need y'all to lift heavy. And I know that that's unfair, and I need y'all to do it before November. I, I'm not kidding, I, I do not know what will happen next year. I, I feel, I, I've, I've worked with these people. They do not care. I'm, I'm unapologetic in telling the truth about them, just as much as they're unapologetic about lying about us. So, I'm asking y'all, ask us for what you need. And I know it's gonna be hard, but I'm, I need y'all to step up as women. I need y'all to step up as women of color. Uh, we get mixed messages from everybody else. And that mixed messaging is what pushes public policy in this community to its detriment. You got folks out here in purple t-shirts and whistles, y'all. I done said it, purple t-shirts and whistles do not stop bullets. They calling the police now. You, you know it, it's not a lie. Number two, we got folks around here, they say they don't want the SROs in the schools. And then you ask the, you ask the principals, you ask the parents. They did three surveys, nobody was under 87% that needed to stay. And then you had folks that come in here last week. We've always been winding people down, but somebody said, I wish we had this in the schools. There's money there, they won't go get it from the state. Again, that's the mixed messaging, right? So which one do they do? You see what they did in Cumberland County? In the state, where I'm pulling all of them out, them teachers had a coup down there last week. Then you sit up here, we got another group of folks saying, we don't want folks saying that they can handle themselves. There's a reason why we have an assessment sent in to youth home. Because we get the fact that folks want to call the folks on the police first. Wanda Boone stood right up at that podium, and what was, what did she say? She had a kid, what was it, a fifth grader or five-year-old? I can't remember which one it was. The kid had a vape car. She didn't call, uh, uh, violence, she didn't call diversion services. She didn't call the principal, she called the police. She called the police on some fifth graders with a vape cartridge. What happened over at DSA, a boy had a pap school ribbon. Former principal called him, put him in project for 13 weeks, said he couldn't come back to school till he finished the alcohol program. We have folks in this community that actively work in their professions every day to make sure that black kids can't come back to school. And if they can't come back to school, they can't learn. If they can't learn, they can't get a job. If they can't get a job, they gonna make a job. You know what job they gonna make? The one holding something up or holding something, and then they back in jail again. I, I need y'all to lift heavy. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the board, we are ready, we're able, and we're willing to do what we need to do to ensure that our Durham community is safe and well. Thank you.
Let me have, let me have one more moment, if you will.
Go for it.
The thing that I, I would like to leave on, to have on the record is, one of the things that occurs, and it's not about you, it's really about leaders in this community and how we treat our black and brown children. We don't step up as far as, as elected officials and put the resources toward the programs and the initiatives. The first thing we do is cut the initiatives that are supposed to help keep these children out of arms' way. But those are the things we first cut. So as a matter of record, I want that stated, is that it's not about the people that are conducting the programs, it's about the elected officials that are, first thing they do is they cut the programs and put the money elsewhere. So, our staff is doing what they can do with the restraints that we put on them as elected officials, we cut the money. So, I appreciate the work that you're doing and the rest of the staff. But let's put the blame where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. We will head into board discussion. Madam Manager, I will give it over to you. I think it's to you and the finance staff at this juncture.
Yes, ma'am.
They look so happy.
Well, look, we had some really good discussions this morning. And so, um, what staff will do is present, um, a first pass at what we feel like is a culmination of all of the discussions that we've had and, um, how we can provide the funding that you have expressed that is, um, a priority for you.
And we will continue to dog trade until Monday.
Horse trade, horse trade, horse trade, dog trade.
No, because if these folks in here acting like rabbit dogs, I'm gonna talk to them like they dogs.
So I will say, and I do want to really commend, um, the staff and, and DCM Hager.
Okay. Claudia said I got to behave. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, Director Lane, David Aedes, Heather Jonathan, Justin, um, Shannon, thank you all so, so much. Um, they have, have really been creative about how we can identify alternatives, funding options, to do what it is you have asked us to do. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Lane.
Thank you. Uh, before we start on the ad delete list and the dog trading, horse trading, trading amongst yourselves to try to get to a reasonable conclusion for the budget ordinance approval on June the 10th, I have handed out a document that talks about DPS because the ad delete list is going to look different. And I want to go over what I handed out for DPS to make sure we are all clear on where we are at this moment in time, if that's okay. Because it's fairly complicated as we try to find ways to limit the tax rate increase needed to support Durham Public Schools while giving, while supporting them as much as possible. So I'm gonna walk through that piece of paper, you can keep it, got it up on the slide. Thank you, Claudia.
Go with God.
There are several things happening here. Quite simply, the total general fund DPS budget increase is $19.8 million from what was approved this year to what is being potentially approved by the board. That's not all the funding. Remember, we have ARPA dollars available, and we are going to use $6 million of ARPA. We moved $4 million from current capital. You'll see it dropped from $6 million to $2 million. We moved that to current expense. There's a lot of things happening. That's why I wrote it out on a piece of paper to me. But in turn, we are, at least for one year, going to use $6 million of ARPA funding to support the $2 million in current capital. That's $8 million available for DPS current capital spending next year. That allowed us to move $4 million to current expense funding, okay? We also going to support their DPS pre-K request of $716,000 with ARPA funding. That's not in here, but there is funding available for that through ARPA. You add those three numbers together, $19.85 million in additional general fund money for DPS, $6 million of ARPA funding for current capital funding, and $716,000. That is a $26.567 million increase for Durham Public Schools for FY '24, '25. Their total request was $27.4 million. What is not, we're actually giving them about half a million more in current capital funding than the 1.5 million they requested. What is not included, the only thing not included in your potentially approved budget for Durham Public Schools is delayed addition by the Board of Education for $1.39 million for hard-to-fill positions.
I want to put on the record, they were all late additions, because nothing came on time.
You just said we're giving them an extra 1.5?
They requested $7.5 million in current capital.
Right.
We're giving them $8 million to try to get a little bit ahead.
So an extra 0.5?
Point five.
So ostensibly, they could use some of the 0.5 for these hard-to-fill positions.
No, ma'am. All the dollars are limited.
Yeah, we, we are strategic in how we're allocating those dollars.
By substituting something in their capital budget, it could free up money that they could choose to use for these positions.
Well, I could, I would just offer that, um, we're trying to limit the, um, burden for next year. I mean, this makes us extremely nervous because we're starting in a, we, we're gonna have to, in effect, um, find $6 million. We're starting in a hole with $6 million, right?
The, the more, correct.
And so, from a, we didn't want to go but so low with what was transferred from capital to the operating category, okay? But we're trying to be as judicious and responsive, but also, as best we can, practical in our budgeting. And so, that is, but we also recognize that the number that was requested for capital is above the 1.5 million, okay? We, we also have an asterisk with this that states we will come back-
Thank you.
-to talk about the capital because of pressures of repair renovations that the superintendent talked about and others that we, we want to make sure that we handle in a strategic way. And that's gonna take us a little bit more time, but with the commitment of doing that towards the August timeframe in summer.
And that's what we talked about.
Yeah, so, so I, I just wanted to just caution, um, before the conversation got too far away.
And we, just to clarify also, and we meet about that on tomorrow, the, the first conversation about that is tomorrow. Because, let, one, we're going above and beyond. And I know y'all got an audience today, so y'all know I don't care. Um, but I want to be very clear, I've told my colleagues, the ones that would listen, um, what we're trying to do is ascertain how much damage, not, let me not say that, how much work needs to be done. Because the school board in no way has advocated at all for any repairs, not at all. And so we will be meeting as leadership this week so that we can ascertain it properly. And then this will be a start, and then see what we can do later in the year. So that doesn't mean that we're not fully funding everything, but seeing as how they're, they're really good at messing things up, we just want to be in a decent position to say, okay, let's see how bad it is and then come back. That's the bad way that, that Claudia don't want to say it.
So Claudia, is that, does that mean that $26 million is where you will start out next year? As far as the school's budget? And then you will add to that on whatever the request is for next year?
That, that means that in total, for '24, '25, we will be providing $26.5 million to DPS. And then next year, when that budget is requested, whatever the request will add on to the $26 million? That's mine. If they come and ask for an increase, um, possibly, that could possibly happen. But remember, this $26 million also includes capital support, so they may not ask for an increase in capital support. We don't know. But if they do ask for it, then yes, it would build on that.
I guarantee you that DPS, just by the nature of state salary increases, will be a seven to eight million dollar minimum increase.
And operate, you know, and-
And, of course.
And operating. So I didn't want to stop everybody. I, but, so before we put this on them or put it on DPS, we still don't have a state budget yet. And we took, we don't. And to Keith's point, in the event the governor or the General Assembly does 3% to 7%, that incremental increase will affect this budget outside of whatever we do here. So I do want to say, before we put it on them or anybody else, additionally, I'm gonna let everybody else go back to their questions. I did want them to finish, but if y'all have something pressing. Uh, and also, as a customary here, I will acknowledge the mayor of Durham has entered the room. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming. I know many of us- Many of us have gone to your meetings as well, so it's nice to have you here to see how we're doing things on this side. But, uh, she has, the manager, can she answer and then go to you, Commissioner Howerton? Thank you.
I do want to also respond to Commissioner Jacobs' ask about the 1.6 million. And I do want to remind us that, um, at least for now, the interim superintendent- And I do want to remind us that, at least for now, the interim Superintendent Moore has proposed some cost-cutting measures. And so, we will be meeting with them to help them work through and navigate those cost-cutting measures. So it is my hope that we would help them find one point six million dollars.
What's the one point six?
That is the hard-to-fill positions.
Oh, I thought that was one point three nine.
It is, but there's twenty percent surcharge.
Okay, that includes that, okay.
That includes that amount, yes, ma'am. Does every, okay, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say that. So I hope that alleviates your concern about us not covering that because we, that is one of the things that I would hope our new collaboration would help us identify where we can cover some of those costs.
And let me just say, I would hope that would be one of the priorities.
Yes.
If we can't do it, that that would absolutely be the number one priority, is finding funding for that request.
And also, so just so we, I want them to finish, but I wanna go to Commissioner Howerton. Additionally, Commissioner Lam is on, and Mr. Mayor, hopefully, your city council said they, you know, they support this, so maybe you would like to tell us how much money you're gonna give us out of y'all budget. So if you won't, I'll give you opportunity, but Commissioner Howerton is on you now. And then we'll go to Commissioner Lam, and then I must press that we have to go to him. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, and also Commissioner Carter. And then we got to let them finish, because they might answer the question ahead of time. That's all I'm saying.
So, the twenty-six million, what kind of tax rate is on, what does that push our tax rate to without even having any consideration for staff?
We are going to get to that next, if you can wait.
Okay.
Can you, I'm happy to, I can tell you now, but if you'll wait, we're gonna go to that second, and I'll show you how all that shakes out.
Okay.
And thank you. And Commissioner Carter, can I get Commissioner Lam? Okay. And some of this is ARPA, so it's not, Commissioner Lam, are we off of mute? Go for it.
That Commissioner Howerton asked my question. It was gonna be around the tax rate increase.
I just wanted to get this out in front so you all were clear, because it's going to look different on the ad delete page, which is all about deltas. I just didn't wanna confuse y'all with that face, because you have this understanding DPS. Is everyone clear? Yes, Commissioner Carter.
Yeah.
I actually felt clearer yesterday, so however. But anyway, the six million from ARPA that's going towards current capital support is four million of that intended to be transferred up to the, you know, sort of like the general fund budget increase almost, so that there would really be like twenty-four million dollars for funds that aren't capital for DPS's request. Do you see what I'm saying? I thought there was this whole thing about...
If you...
So really, the capital is two million, I mean, in effect.
The capital, the general fund is two million, but ARPA is giving the same amount of money, at least for twenty-four, twenty-five.
But four of that's being shifted.
Not of the ARPA.
I thought it was.
There's two million, there's two million left, if you approve, in the general fund for current capital, two million. Then there's an additional six million of ARPA, for a total of eight million dollars available to DPS.
Minus four.
No.
I thought there was this whole shift. What happened to that?
Four million, there was six million dollars budgeted.
The four million went to operations, right? This part is, yeah, I, like I said, I thought I got it yesterday, now I'm confused.
Y'all making it more confusing and harder to understand, so we need to...
Well, that's because we had him read it yesterday.
Ladies, ladies, lady leaders, I heart y'all. I would again respectfully request, as we proceed in this meeting, that we allow them to do the complete presentation, and then we ask some of the questions about the numbers. He just wanted to let us see this first before the other sticker shot. Maybe he should have did it in the reverse order, but I can appreciate this plan. I am, but I completely get that, and I think he should have gave them to us afterwards. I know we weren't, we know, don't let, because we got company, we don't know how to run this show. So if y'all could, go ahead, Keith and Claudia, and then, because it's three questions, y'all, at a time. Thank y'all.
Claudia recommended that I go through the recommended column. If you see what the manager recommended, you see the amount recommended for current expense at a hundred and ninety-four million, and you see six million dollars in current capital. That was what was approved last year. DPS requested seven point five. In trying to limit the amount of the property tax rate increase needed to fund twenty-six point five million dollars, we are recommending moving four million dollars of current capital down from six to two, to current expense, but replacing that money with four million dollars of ARPA, plus an additional two million dollars of ARPA. So you got two million in current, plus four, plus two, for a total of eight million dollars between ARPA and general fund for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Six million, that ARPA money noted there, is one-time, part of the hole that we gotta have to figure out how to dig out of in twenty-five, twenty-six. That's a different conversation for a policy retreat, and you're gonna hear me talk about that a year from now. Does that clarify for you?
Yeah, I think so, and...
Go ahead.
And honestly, it doesn't concern me too badly that the six million is one-time funding for capital, because capital in general, you know, I know there are recurring annual, of course, costs, but this is an attempt to get at some of the emergency sort of capital.
Correct. It's going up from six million to a total of eight million for twenty-four, twenty-five. It is a hole for the county for twenty-five, twenty-six that we will have to find an additional four million just to get up to six, or an additional six million to go up to eight, or seven point five, or whatever those choices are for twenty-five, twenty-six. I would say, in total, the board is close to approving twenty-six point six million dollars in additional funding for DPS between general fund dollars and ARPA dollars.
So what happened to, so the eight million dollars is being used for what? Because I thought the eight million was going to be used for the classified salaries.
It's in that twenty-six point five million dollars. The eight million for the classified study is part of the nineteen point eight five million dollar general fund increase.
So I had a question about that.
So how did that come from, move from thirteen to nineteen without the eight million being in that?
That's because the manager did not recommend in her budget the eight million dollar increase, plus the surcharge, the charter surcharge. You all, at least per discussions, have hinted that you are willing to take that on. So that increase from twelve point nine five million dollars that the manager recommended as an increase has now jumped to nineteen million dollars to add in that eight point eight million dollar classified study recommendation, plus the twenty percent surcharge on that. It's about ten million dollars.
I see a hand here, but I do wanna make sure Commissioner Howerton has hers finished first. Go for it.
So that's in the nineteen?
Yes, ma'am.
But then, when you add another six million to it, is that, is that subtracting out of it, or is that adding another service to the nineteen?
We are, we are not, we are simply meeting ninety-nine percent of the DPS request in full between ARPA dollars and county funding. If you look at the approved current expense funding for twenty-three, twenty-four, it's one hundred and eighty-one point nine million dollars. We are going to two hundred and five point eight million dollars. That is a twenty-three million dollar increase. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm looking, I'm looking at the bottom of the sheet where you got the nineteen eight fifty.
Right.
And then the current capital support, six million. That, you adding the six million on to the nineteen?
Correct, but it's coming from a different funding source, yes.
But why, why is it being added on to the nineteen? What is it paying for?
The six million dollars, go ahead, Claudia, if you...
No, the six million dollars will cover the capital expense, okay? And then, seven hundred and sixteen thousand will cover, and that's ARPA dollars. Those will cover the pre-K expense. The reason we broke it out that way is because those are one-time dollars, and we wanted to make sure it was clear the amount that the county is supporting on a recurring basis in local dollars. And I know this, it's, we had conversations earlier about this, and we were trying to figure out the right way to show it, because it is complex. So I totally understand Commissioner Howerton and others, how this can seem a little confusing. But this was our attempt to try to leverage all available resources to meet the board's desire to get to a different funding level.
So let me ask you one other question about the six million. Is that, will that be taxed, part of the tax evaluation?
No, ma'am. So the six million, so the six million are ARPA dollars, and we have to use those through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So that is the other advantage of this, although whatever dollar we give to Durham Public Schools, they, what they don't spend, it does flow to their fund balance. So it will be treated the same in that respect. They have until twenty twenty-six to use it. Now, when we get to twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, we do need to plan for the six million dollars. And so, if you may recall, we started out this budget year planning, and back in November, we said where we were starting in a hole, kinda, sorta. So before we even asked for a request, there were some areas that we were planning for. So this will be one that we're planning for, and we're hopeful that other areas such as sales taxes, et cetera, are stabilized enough that our projections will allow us to move forward and not have some of the pre-pandemic adjustments that we've gone through with this cycle. But that's why also, in the recommended budget, we said twenty-five, twenty-six will be a year of zero-based budget review, so that we can look at our base and everything we do and revisit what kind of service delivery we desire and what can we afford. So we have, this will be in the forefront throughout the whole process.
And if I can just add one more piece to hopefully clarify more. So where you see that nineteen million eight fifty, that is the amount that would have to be covered through property tax increase needed. So the reason we broke it out, if we hadn't, if we hadn't used ARPA for the six million and the seven sixteen, instead of nineteen million eight fifty, you would have seen twenty-six million five hundred sixty-seven thousand. So we're not having to burden the...
That's where I was trying to get at.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, we are not, we are putting off an additional one point something cent tax rate increase because we are using ARPA funds, at least for one year. But as Claudia noted, and I have to, that's not permanent. Next year, we've got to climb out of that hole, either through other revenue sources or find one point some odd cents worth of property tax next year to make up the six million of ARPA we're using. But that's what we're trying to do, to limit the tax rate increase needed to support Durham Public Schools' request.
Commissioner Carter.
Thank you.
Praise God.
Thank you for your, I am in awe of your fiscal wizardry, and really appreciate it, you know, so much, the way in which you've sort of cobbled together, you know, more of an increase in the tax rate to help us be as fully supportive of the DPS request as possible, also looking at other revenues in creative ways. I just really, really appreciate the way you've puzzled this together for us. You've helped us solve a puzzle. But one question I still have is...
We've gone to the zoo down here. We apologize, Commissioner Carter, go.
That's all right. I'm comfortable in a zoo. Let's see, how do I wanna phrase this? Is there a, is there any concern that some of the money, the ARPA funding, I guess it would be the ARPA funding, has a restriction on it such that DPS won't be able to use, such that there won't be enough to fully implement the classified study? And the reason I ask is because just the math doesn't work for me. You know, we were at three, we were at thirteen million dollar from the manager, and then, you know, just adding eight point eight eight to that, you're, it's, you know, more than, it's twenty-one million, so...
The total current expense increase, current expense, that top line, from one eighty-one nine to two oh five is twenty-three million dollars. That, if you look at their request and add up everything related to current expense funding, minus the one point three nine that we aren't funding, there is money in that line item to do those things. The only concern, if there is any potential, is ARPA dollars used for capital and/or ARPA dollars used for DPS pre-K, which I'm confident that Claudia, John Kiefer, and our office in management have reviewed closely. If there were to be a problem with that, we could always go to county pay-go money to backfill that six million dollars. But to be clear, at least from your intent, the potential approved budget of two hundred and five million has twenty-three-plus million dollars in additional current expense funding to support every one of the DPS requests on that sheet that Commissioner Jacobs just showed, right there, except for the one point hard-to-fill position amount, plus the charter.
I remember the money sheet, right? I know the sheet. I remember that money sheet, but do you see my point?
Can I throw something else out also, too? Can I, I'm, as respectfully as I can, I know what you're asking. But you know what the big problem is? Even if we were to give them all twenty-seven, they still have to decide what they're gonna do with it.
Oh, I'm not even asking for the all twenty-seven. I'm just trying to understand the current expense versus, just the line item. I just, the...
Commissioner Carter, can I give it a shot? So if you look at the current expense top line, one eighty-one to two oh five is twenty-three million.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's...
And then, you look at the next line, which is cap...
Twenty-three, I understand. That's what we need to have, is twenty-three, but...
We do have it, but let me, so the next line is capital outlay, which in the general fund funded is going from six to two. That's a minus four. So it's the twenty-three minus the four is why you're only seeing the nineteen.
Now, that's been bothering me the whole time.
So we can add that column, and so this will be a little bit more clear.
I'm sure it is my brain. It is not the way you presented it. I totally...
There's a lot going on, and it needed to be explained.
But can I, y'all, because here's the other issue. The reason why, and I respect y'all, and I would have got, I'm happy David did it. Every time we ask a question, it confuses the public, and quite frankly, it's not, I don't want y'all to leave out of here and tell your friends the wrong thing. I don't want anybody in the public to tell somebody else. That's not, I just want us, I'm happy you all are asking these questions, but let's also be mindful of people who are just catching things and going one way and going another way. I feel like this is, this is more than double, and to be quite frank, it is more than double that we've come up with sitting up here, absent conversations with DAE, absent conversations with DPS, absent conversations with their staff, and I personally think that this is a good stab at it. And it's absent all these things, but it is at the burden of the tax dollars. I mean, of our tax, of our, excuse me, it's our, me, because I live here and I am a taxpayer, and a lot of folks that got up and did a lot of talking last week were not, you know. Matter of fact, and I'm gonna let him finish, but Durham Public Schools is forty-five percent African-American. It is forty percent Latino, and I ain't see eighty-five percent of none of that in this audience. Let's really be honest about it. And so, I think that this is a decent hit at what we're trying to look at without continuing to... Like the manager said yesterday, we have consistently done this every single year, and the board that's coming after this is about to inherit this horrible, horrible problem that we laying at their feet. So I would like for them to get a chance to finish at this best effort that quite frankly, I was comfortable when we were at twenty-three. They were able to get to twenty-six, and that was last Thursday, when there was a math equation that we came up with. And we're trying our best, and I'm saying this as nice as I can. I hope you can receive it. Unless you have been talking to them for the past two or three weeks, like some of us have, what I don't want to happen is for them to be kinda hit with questions when there are those of us who are sitting here, not, and everybody not in leadership, and we knew some of it because we've continuously worked on this issue, because we didn't want them to be attacked. So if you have questions, I want you to ask them, but if they're really deep in the weeds about what you don't understand, I would encourage you between now and the tenth to talk with them like some of the rest of us have, so that you're a bit more comfortable with it. That's all I'm saying. And I hope everybody can receive that, because I have to do that sometimes when I don't understand. And I hope everybody can receive that because I have to do that sometimes when I don't understand numbers.
I have been talking to them.
I'm not, I said everybody, because I said everybody, I said myself.
Let's move forward with hope in our heart. Let's, let's do it.
I have no hope for black children in Durham Public Schools. Keith, you can go ahead.
I will end this slide, and we're going to one more slide, and then we'll get to the add delete list. I just want to emphatically say the county is supporting, at least if the board approves what we've shown in that earlier one, twenty six point five million dollars more for DPS between ARPA funding and county funding. Having said that, there is a per pupil number that matters to a lot of people as a sort of reference point in comparison to other people. The per pupil funding is only county's current expense, general fund, divided by the number of pupils. That approved number is two oh five, and it's not approved yet. The proposed, hopefully to be agreed upon now and approved on June the tenth. Current expense funding for DPS is two hundred and five million eight hundred and two thousand dollars minus the annual pre K support is two oh five, two ninety three, divided by the number of estimated students for next year. That's charter and DPS at thirty eight, three nine six. That's a per pupil number of five thousand three hundred and forty seven dollars. The budgeted per pupil for the current year is four thousand six hundred and fifty. That's a growth of almost seven hundred dollars per pupil to support. And that's not all of it. That's just the current expense line. And remember, we're putting six million more in current capital with ARPA, and we're doing some pre K stuff with ARPA. That's not counted in that number. That's simply, which is a good thing because it's not the twenty percent surcharge on charter schools. But it's still a seven hundred dollar increase per pupil in local funding for Durham Public Schools by the Board of County Commissioners. We good? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Jacobs.
You know, I've asked this a lot, but if we added, just for hypothetical purposes, the direct funding that we also provide that I I really would like us to understand because if you add the new pre K and the, you know, the witted and plus the new that we're gonna do, which is um for Murray Massenberg and witted, if you include that, plus the SROs, public health nurses, you know, Bull City Schools, all of that, which it comes up to probably around nine, ten million. What, I'm interested in what that would actually get us to.
You have that as a question, and I can do that math. I just haven't had a chance to get to it. And we will put that in the budget document as well. We do add, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, but I think the community needs to know that, too.
And we also, we do on the budget page for Durham Public Schools show a per pupil funding that includes fifty million dollars or whatever the number is for annual DPS related debt service. I'm happy to add another six million dollars to that number. It's like sixty million dollars we're giving roughly DPS related issues that don't go to DPS directly, annual debt service for the capital we spend. Bull City, the reading program, SROs, um, school health nurses, all of that. I'm happy to add that to the page and to answer your question.
We are punching above our weight. I mean, our, we are, you look at the Wade County budget, which I think they approved last night is about two billion dollars. We're almost at a billion dollars, but guess what? They're four times as big as us.
Can I do that quick math for you? They're they're four times our size, and their budget is, because they said it was one point one billion for schools. It was not, if y'all ready, it was six hundred and ninety million. So here it is, they're only using about twenty five percent of their money for their uh school board, but we're using almost uh fifty percent for ours. I just want to put, so you're comparing us to a county that is four times our size and not even using percentage wise, half as much as we're using for our schools. But go ahead.
Yeah, I I just think the context is important. We we we're, we spend a lot of money in Durham, and we do, we do prioritize funding our schools, and they deserve to be prioritized. Um, and but I just, I just think it's important that people understand, you know, we are putting our values uh where and are reflected in the budget. Um, and even the, I think they gave an additional fifty eight million for schools. And if we do this, we're actually um doing proportionally, they, they, um, again, they're four times as big as us. Their school system is about a hundred and sixty thousand kids. So um, yeah, we're, we, and thanks to you all. You're helping us figure this out because we could not do it without your expertise. So thank you.
That's all I have on this sheet. Now I'm gonna show you how that affects the overall tax rate increase. We show you an add delete sheet that's going to look a little different. I hope you will trust me. There's no way I could explain what I just explained on this sheet because it's done differently than that sheet. So I hope I have earned your trust. Having said that, there are some changes that were discussed over the board work sessions, budget work sessions. One was yesterday with uh cooperative extension, adding back a hundred and seven thousand dollars that David and I noted. We're gonna use reserve for future purchases dollars that we have. That's a net zero change to the budget, no cost. Potential benefits changes, Dr. Sowell and Claudia can talk about this, but there are some concerns among the board members about the benefits changes, the buyout plan and how it may affect lower salaried employees. There's, we're going to budget a million dollars and hold on to it, see how open enrollment ends up, see who who charged, got charged what, and not individually, but in aggregate, and try to appropriate potentially up to a million dollars to offset some of those costs. That's just an additional million dollars to this budget that wasn't added. Could be a bonus, could be any number of ways we support these things. That's included in the add delete list. Okay, DTCC came to you all and talked about needing additional five hundred thousand, five hundred and four thousand dollars more. That's in the add delete. It's additional expenditure we have to find funds for. DPS ends up being those three red numbers. Please don't make me go through them because they look foundationally different. But just trust me, just trust me, okay? Because this is a delta from the manager's recommended. Just trust me. And then there's Hayti Reborn, and there was some discussion. I think Hayti had requested one point five five million after their presentation to you. There was some discussion yesterday. We have a million in for Hayti Reborn at this point. That number's added in. We roll all that up together. That's, David scrolled down a little bit farther. All that ends up meaning that there's a net nine point three nine million dollars the county had to find in general fund. We're finding that in a, in two different ways. We're finding it by appropriating more fund balance. General fund fund balance, per some discussions that Claudia. That the amount of additional fund balance being appropriated is two point seven million dollars.
Just, we already knew that number, but go ahead, sorry.
That's a little less than half a cent. So instead of increasing the tax rate another half a cent, we're using our savings account to support it. But we still need to go up a little bit on the property tax rate. The manager recommended a three point two five cent tax rate increase after applying fund balance appropriated of two point seven. I still need some more money. We need equivalent to one point two five cents additional property tax rate increase. So if you approve what DPS, what we've explained around DPS, Hayti with a plus one million, DTCC with a plus five hundred thousand dollars, a plus one million dollars potentially for benefits plan cost offsets, however we figure that out, you're going to need to increase the tax rate above the manager's recommended by one point two five. That's a total tax rate increase potentially approved by the Board of County Commissioners, four point five cents. That is where we are at. If y'all are okay with that, I need, we can say yes, and we'll move on, and we will produce a budget ordinance on June the tenth that reflects these numbers, any tax rate increase of four point five. Or if you're not, you need to discuss here.
Well, we ain't gonna discuss it here, but thank you so much for this work that you all put in. Thank you for listening to us. I do know that there's some people who've talked to me about some minor changes and some guardrails that we want to put up. Nothing more more technical, some guardrails around the ARPA funding so that we can make sure that it is utilized appropriately, uh making sure that the I L A is strong. I know we've done that, uh discussing if potentially later on how we will deal with the Hayti Reborn justice budget to give them the guardrails they need. Um, I I think, you know, one of the things I noticed, we gave them a fiscal agent. They have a CFO, and they also had an external audit. You know, we pushed them to have a fiscal agent, you know, where's the wriggle room uh there? And these are things that I've I've discussed with some folks, so I'm not saying these in a vacuum. Um, I think there are a couple of other things that we could look at. Uh, I'll let the my, the rest of my colleagues, but it is a long way to June tenth. I do just want to once again reiterate, um, I thank my colleagues, whether they believe it or not, for at least voicing their opinion and being open to have some of these discussions and um and do these things. Uh, I'm unapologetic about any of the comments that I've made because what I do want folks to understand, um, we have increased this budget every year, and parents ask us questions that they don't ask y'all. And we ain't gave them nothing to show for it. And we are once again doing, we're aligning our votes with our values. Um, and parents are gonna need to see something because we see that they're going to other alternatives, and they're not going to other alternatives because of the reasons that y'all are saying that they're going to them. They're going to them for, and I will give those reasons on June tenth uh when I make my statement about this budget. But we can move on to the next person. Whoever, I see Commissioner Carter has uh her light on, so I'll let her go first. Anybody else for the good, and please, if you do have a problem, I see Commissioner Jacobs, talk to the manager, talk to Claudia, talk to, well, talk to manager first, and then, and we'll try to figure it out between now and the tenth.
Actually, I I'll turn my light back on.
Well, Commissioner Jacobs did have her hand, if you're, if you're, she's still looking, so you can go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say how collaborative I feel this process was um among the five of us commissioners. And, you know, there's a lot of political pressure on each of us, too, and different, different sectors are applying different pressure to different people. Um, and I think that we all try to listen to the public, and it's interesting when the public says, do the right thing and be brave. If we only knew exactly what the right thing was, that part would be easy. I mean, the, these are difficult decisions, lots to weigh, lots of pros and cons. And I feel like we've, you know, we, is there, if it's everything in this budget exactly the way I would budgeting, budget if it was just me, probably not, but um, and we would each say that, but we've, we've negotiated. That's what we've tried to do well together this year, and I feel like we have. I feel like this has been a team effort um among the five of us and in partnership with our staff. And and we've come through or are coming through. This could be the end of, you know, a really contentious budget process, and it's a positive outcome. Um, and I would like to try to feel uplifted by this um and and hopeful, you know, for our community's future, that we're investing in the most important services for the residents of Durham County with with this budget. Um, I just, I, you know, that's what I wanted to say. I'd like to try to be optimistic and hopeful.
Commissioner Alon.
Hi, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Carter and add on, just thank you so much to the budget staff and the manager's team for hearing all of our feedback and thoughts throughout this process and working to be innovative around, like, you know, how do we use the ARPA dollars? How do we provide this extra funding to DPS without having to raise the taxes like even above five cents, close to six cents or anything? And really hearing those concerns from each of us. Um, and I actually, like, as Commissioner Carter mentioned, like, I appreciate all of the people who have taken the time to come and speak with us, who have sent us letters, who called. Um, I really appreciate that level of engaged constituency because it's important for each of us um to hear from residents, to hear from people about how, what they need from us. Um, so I just really want to thank everyone who's been part of this process, and I'm really excited that we've reached this point. I feel really good and comfortable with uh the funding we're gonna be able to give to our schools. I'm glad that we're gonna be able to provide and and support the, well, maybe I'm speaking too soon, but I saw the one million for the benefits that hopefully uh folks will be able to keep some form of their benefits. And just had one final question about the retirees. Does that include the retirees in that one million?
Manager.
So, yes, so the number itself um could include it. I've spoken with our H R director, so this may um have to be more policy driven. We won't be able to finalize that by the tenth, but I did convey that we want to make sure we address the concerns of the retirees as well. And so that's a conversation we had this morning. And when, again, when I asked you all if you would trust us to do the right thing.
We do, we do.
If you all will allow us time to work through that, we do have that um top of mind.
Thank you, Manager Sowell. I appreciate that. And yeah, if we can, as we work through that, maybe communicate to employees and retirees that we're still, like, even though the budget is passed, this is still something we're working through and, like, please, you know, stick around with us.
Thank y'all for sticking around. Y'all ain't, you know, hold a gun to our head and say y'all ain't coming to work. So I do appreciate that. I do, thank y'all so much. I'm happy you brought that up. I had almost forgot, y'all come to work every day, praise God. Um, I also, I'm gonna go to you, Commissioner Jacobs. Um, I get it, you know, I I I get it, you know, old Commissioner Burns is all gloom and doom. No, I'm not, I'm a realist. I can sit here and at the same time clap for a graduation and then be saddened by the graduation rate. It doesn't make me a monster, that makes me a realist. Like, we have to be honest, like, we can't, if if all we look at is a pretty picture every day, we are disillusioned fools. And I feel like that's what we, we, I I want people to always look at the bright side. But if this board comes in here next year and the only thing they look at is the bright side, we gonna continue to have dead kids outside, we gonna continue to have folks on drugs. That, it's just the honest truth. Like, we have, there's no problem when Commissioner Jacobs talks about fentanyl and how many people are dead. There's no problem when I talk about how much we don't spend on minority women business. There's no problem when I talk about black maternal health and how I want outcomes. It's like, we can talk about those bad things, and everybody in this board can receive it. As soon as we ask one question about the schools, it is like we are walking around here looking like Mark Robinson. And I don't know what position, I don't know what is warped in y'all head that a question is anti teacher as opposed to it is, why don't we have anything in front of us from the school board that makes any sense anymore? How did we give y'all seven hundred million dollars, give y'all, all of y'all ARPA money, all y'all S's money, then give y'all all our S's money, and I mean, see, all our ARPA money, and y'all still can't make it work? So I'm just, I'm being honest with the public because they don't know. And I'm, and and their parents, you're exactly right, Commissioner Carter, there are parents that come to me, and there are parents, there are parents that come to you that will never come to me and vice versa. And and while I sit in this seat, I'm gonna honor those parents. And I don't have to honor anybody else up here except for them. And I, and I'm not gonna apologize, I I used to apologize. I'm not gonna apologize for speaking up for, I sent the school board a letter last week about a teacher calling a kid a monkey. I sent another letter to a school, the school board, about a boy being sexually assaulted, and they have not replied or responded to it yet. But we're giving them this money. I can vote and give them this money and still say I want those kids protected. Commissioner Jacobs. Damn.
Well, I just want to say this, this has been a very challenging budget. My, in my twelve years, definitely the most difficult one. But I do feel really good about this process. Has been one of collaboration and just everyone working really, really hard. I, we are in a crisis and we need to, it is really important that we take this very dramatic action at this time. And I think that our staff, I really appreciate that you recognize that um and have worked with us to help us. Um, we are um in a time of crisis that takes extraordinary action. And I hope that that's what the community will see. Um, we, we need to have a strong public school system to be a thriving community. Our schools are the heart of our community, to have a thriving economy, to be able to attract employers, to be able to have families who want to live here, um, to have a safe community. We we have to have a, a thriving um schools. They are the center of our community. I fully believe in that as a former Durham Public School educator, parent, um, children who are graduates, and now the parent of a Durham Public School teacher. Um, so, but the work, this is just the beginning. I feel like this budget is just the beginning. We are stepping in to do what we need to do. And the collaboration has to continue. We all have to continue working together. And I'm really excited about what we heard from the intern superintendent yesterday. Um, the measures that she's already putting in place, the policies. The measures that she's already putting in place, the policies, the fact that our manager and our board leadership is going to work together with our staff leadership on forging a, a new path forward. We're, we're in a new time of not only the continued attacks from the state legislature. We have to take things to the state legislature, but at the same time, we're in a new landscape of having less revenues, thanks to our staff educating us on that. So, yes, so this is, for me, I feel like this is just the beginning of trying to work together in new ways for the benefit of our community. So, thank you, thank you, thank, I'm really grateful to all of our staff.
Yes, Keith. So, I want to thank the staff mostly for all the work that you've done because we know we challenge you, we challenge you. I do not feel good about this budget. I do not feel good about this budget. Of all, after sixteen years of going through budget process and the last three years being the chair and fully funding DPS, this budget makes me sad. It really makes me sad. It makes me sad because of the tax burden we're going to put on the citizens and the fact that we're talking, we can shout and be great and happy that we have given DPS what they ask for. But the outcomes, will my children in Durham be in any better position next year than they are today? That is my question. What will be the outcomes? That will be different than we see today. I don't see them. And normally I like to think I'm a positive person, but right now, I don't envision that our children will be any better off in two thousand and twenty-five when this board sits here and navigate how they're going to come up with more than twenty-five million dollars? Because it will be more. So, no, this doesn't make, this, this budget doesn't make me happy. And, you know, there are a lot of things that still, we're not sure of in this budget, but I just need to say, it just doesn't, I, I take no joy in this. And we've got a lot with the economy, the way that it is. Everybody that's in an economics downturn in our community or having challenges with finances. The people that are not having problems with finances are in that upper level of income. So this won't bother them. The people that are in low in, low to middle income, they will have a challenge here. And who they can point their fingers at is this board. So, we can take joy in it if we want, but I, I don't see it. Thank you.
Come, Dr. Sowell, if you have any, if you have any final comments? Because we just going to sit here and pontificate about how disappointed we are and I don't want the board to take that on because I happen to agree with Commissioner Howardton. Fully. That is, I'm, I'm not going to do it. I'm, I'm going to wait till Monday because I, I want to light y'all asses up on Monday after I vote yes for this budget. So, yeah, if there's nothing else, Dr. Sowell, you can go ahead. I mean, it's funny to some people on the board because y'all, it, it doesn't matter what the teachers want, y'all give it to them. And, and what I can't understand, I, I, I'm, I'm going to put the emails on my personal website of how many times I've sent something to DPS about a black child being hurt and how I ain't heard from none of y'all. That's, that's what I want to put out there. So people can get up at this podium and they can cry their blues, but a black mama cry hers and I hear silence. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's the energy I'm bringing on Monday. I'm going to vote for this budget, but I'm taking some people with me. Doctor Sowell, do you have anything?
Just want to thank again the staff. You've done just a fabulous job of helping us navigate this very, very difficult budget process and the financial constraints that we had. You all have been nothing short of brilliant and I'm so, so proud of you right now. And I told them we are going out to celebrate regardless, once it, once it's done.
Please do.
We are, and then I want to thank my board. You all have been very frank and open about sharing what concerned you, what bothered you, what you needed to see, what you weren't happy with. And I did tell the staff today and I named names. I said, "This one isn't happy about this, this one isn't happy about that, this one is..." So that means we've done a good job because nobody is absolutely happy. We took, we took what, what we had and we put together what we felt like was a good compromise for all of the, the wants and the needs that you all have. So are we one hundred percent happy with where we are? We are not, but it's because we know, we know that we couldn't do everything we wanted to do in this budget. And, and we wanted to make sure we minimized the property tax rate increase. But I do want to thank you all for still being respectful in how you expressed your concerns, disappointments and what you were unhappy with. I still feel like we are good friends and I'm still looking forward to working with you all. Like you said, Commissioner Jacobs, this is just the beginning, but I'm looking forward to working with you all as we navigate this next, this upcoming fiscal year. Thank you all so much for your help with this.
Ma, ma, we, okay, final comment from Commissioner Howardton and then we will go into adjournment.
I have something else I want to mention. It has nothing to do with the budget process. If we're finished with that, I, I want to lift up something else. There is one item that I'd like to, for us to be able to, when we, once we get through this, to get on the, on our agenda for a presentation. And that is Zafu Temple. This is a land deal that our folks from Raleigh to Durham is undertaking. And I would like for it to come to this board and for them to be able to do a presentation. And either August, September, if we could get that on the board, on, on the agenda.
This is the last comment because we, we, and I hear you and we will, we will discuss that in leadership meeting. That didn't need to be brought up now and what?
Yeah, I, I, I would, I, that's what I would like to say is I think that we, it's fine to have presentations, but in the kind of climate we're in right now financially, I think I'll just put that out.
You asked for a presentation a week.
We're talking about, that's fine.
That's fine, presentations are fine.
Ladies, ladies.
Okay, we're talking about a presentation that I would like to come to the board for, to be, so that the, these are community people that they want to have some discussion in front of this board.
Thank you. It is noted and we will go to leadership and talk about it and find the best time to do it. Since this has absolutely nothing to do with the budget, I will call this meeting before. Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at you. I, I'm looking, you got a black son. When I'm not here, I need you to lift heavy. I see an affirmative nod. I'm going to hold you to that. This meeting is adjourned.